We're going to maintain that three minutes. And then we figured if either one of them had a response to what the other candidate said, we'll give them an extra minute to respond to them. And after that, as Natalie said, we should have plenty of time for questions, so make sure you write those on the cards. Mr. Testerman, as the incumbent, I'm going to start with you. I'm going to give you about four minutes. So briefly, give us some background on you, and also, we'd love to know what has inspired you to be a school board member, and what is now inspiring you to run for this office again?
Well, I'll start with inspiration first. What inspired me was my retirement as an educator. I was content, was hoping to just be the grandfather of my granddaughter at the time. And the school board became, the seat became available, and neighbors crossed the street from me, and most of the neighbors beside me, they met me at my front porch, and they said, "We need you to run for the school board." Through them, and through talking with other neighbors and folks in this community that I've lived in, I've lived in District 8 for 42 years. And I started my education, teaching in Hamilton County, in District 8 at East Ridge High School. So that was the reason I wanted to run, because my neighbors came to me, I had time, and it was something I greatly cared about, and still do care about, as an educator. I was an educator for over 32 years. I was a school building principal for 26 years. I was involved with programs that involved children, especially high school kids. I was the last county coordinator of youth employment and training. And some of you that may have a little touch of gray in your hair, remember those type programs. Summer Youth Employment Training Program was, in my experience, was one of those things that brought hope, it brought to kids the excitement of what the summer was going to look like. They had a job, they would be making money so that they could buy new clothes and do whatever they needed to do with school next year. Youth Employment Training was tremendous program, we had in-school program and after-school programs, as well as the summer. I saw some, during that time period, I received a job to handle, and it was one that, of all politically incorrect titles, was called the Refugee Program. At the time, there was unrest in Iran at the time, and so many families were being disrupted there in their country, they applied for, to come and have sanctuary in the United States. Country Cambodia, Vietnam, many of the families applying to have sanctuary in their country. And I was coordinator of what was called, at that time, bad name, but was a good program, Refugee Program. We identified students as they were coming in, we'd meet them, try to help with, get them enrolled in school, have them housing if they needed, try to make references to community people that could assist them. One of the bright spots out of that was a young girl who happened to go to a church that I was working at, White Oak United Methodist Church. She started out there, her dad was a custodian for a while, they moved to Red Bank Methodist Church, and the little girl became the spelling bee champion for this region. Wonderful girl. In process of my experience as a school administrator, my first school as a principal was at Selkirk High School, middle, actually it's a K-12 back then, it was a K-12 school, and had 750 kids. Wonderful time, had a great time there. East Ridge High School, I taught there, retired from East Ridge High School. I've had a school principal at Principal Shipp in Udoato, Mountain Oaks Elementary School. I was principal at Signal Mountain, the last principal at Bachman Elementary School. Great community, good school. I was principal in Red Bank at White Oak Elementary School, spent five years there, had wonderful programs there. Any others? It seems like there should be at least one more. At Gans Middle Valley at the time, I was there. If I would say this, the thing that I bring here, and the thing, I am a community person, I've been involved in this community, know many people, I love this community, District 8, and I will say this, I will do anything I can to make things successful. Wasn't long ago, a year ago, we had our football stadium that was shut down because of disfunding and the unsafety of the building. Our commissioner here, whom I talk with, Tim Boyd, we talk often, we ran a program, got us a new stadium up, and we're not through. So, thank you, that's me a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Testerman. Mr. McLendon, same question. Give us a little background on you, and tell us why you're inspired to run for this office.
First off, I want to thank y'all for hosting this tonight, I think this is really important. And second off, so I don't get in trouble later in the night, I need to thank my girlfriend. Back in December, when I asked her about this, I don't think she realized what she was getting into. But, I'm a product of Hamilton County Schools. I started at Spring Creek right down the road, went to East Spring Elementary, Udoa Middle, then Udoa High School. So, I've been in the schools all my life, and after I left Udoa, I started volunteering by going back to Udoa, helping with their leadership program, and then volunteering, he's like a second father to me, Jonathan Goddard is the basketball coach at East Ridge, helping him, doing pictures for him and whatever else. But, that aside, I really, when I got to college at UTC, I was, it was basically like a train. And we hear about this college readiness and all this that we push on students, it's a real thing. Our students are not going to college being prepared. I was one of them. When I got to UTC, I had to take remedial math, you know, English, I wasn't damn sick English, but science. And that's something I think that we need to focus on. We have this focus on career and vocational and stuff like that, and that's something I think we've really felt with our students the last 20 years, is that we have kind of went down the wrong path. We haven't put education on the forefront, and that's what I want to do and what I want to bring to the table. I am young, I'm 23, you know, that is going to be held against me, but what I lack in experience, I lack, as, I want to be a leader for the community, I want to make it about the kids. It's not about politics, it is about the kids. And the second thing that's really kind of inspired me to run, and something that's really dear near to my heart, is the lack of transparency we have seen, and it has gotten better over the years with our school board and county government in general. Really, at the turning point of, before I went to my girlfriend and asked her if this was okay, at the school board meeting last fall, when they did the new building plan, $120 million, that's a lot of, a lot of money. I attend every single school board member, meeting possible, I had, I think it got leaked to the paper or something the week before, I had no clue about it. I talked to school board members that didn't know they were voting on it that night. And that's something that really struck me, is, in a blink of an eye, we spent $120 million with little to no community input. And that's one thing I want to bring to the table. District 2, Kathy Leonard, has started an advisory council, which I think is an amazing program. That's something I want to bring to this district, and setting up a advisory council with teachers, principals, parents, students even, I think that's kind of also where we, that gets left out of this equation, is we don't bring students enough to the table. We have our non-voting members on the board, but I think we really just need to see better transparency. District 8 has no social media platform to spread messages, no email list, and that's what I just want to do, and I hope I get the honor to, is to be that community leader. I don't have all the answers, I'm not an educator, it's National Educator, National Educator Week, and I thank all the teachers, and Mr. Testerman for his service, but, you know, I humbly ask for your support on August 2.
All right, I'm going to let you keep the mic, because you've teed me up for the first question perfectly. Part of the Unified Ed PAC for Public Education is this idea of what you just talked about, which is transparency and accountability. And it's this idea that I think, for a long time, and it's not just as it relates to school board members and our constituents, but really, our public and our community, as we relate to elected officials. What we heard from people when we surveyed them, even before Unified Ed came to be four years ago, was that that was one of their top issues, that they felt a disconnect. So, I'm going to give you a few more minutes to address that point. How are you going to specifically address it? I know you mentioned a few points with the advisory council, et cetera. How will you address those issues and make transparency and accountability a priority if you are elected to school board?
You know, starting, going back to the advisory council, I think that's a step in the right direction. I think it brings, we get leaders from each school in District 8, and they're kind of the person that can, you know, decimate the information out. Another thing is, I don't think, and I think Dr. Johnson has done a really good job of this, is bringing public input with surveys and the calendar committee, bringing people, you know, it's, with social media, it's easy to make us a survey, monkey survey, and send it out. That's, I mean, that's what I plan to do, I'm not doing this for me, I want to know what my constituents in District 8 want me to do. So using social media, using surveys, using an advisory council, I've also talked to our great commissioner, Tim Boyd, District 7, Commissioner Smedley and Joe Wendey, they do, and I think it's awesome, and I haven't seen it in District 8, they do community meetings at least once a semester or twice a year, where they get to come out and they usually bring in Darren Ledford, their city council member too, where they, I mean, it's basically, this is what we're doing, this is an update, and then, you know, the community members get to ask questions. And I think that's, that's really important, and something that has really kind of inspired me, like you were saying, to run, and I think it's a huge proponent. I also think, I, it drives me insane when I see something, you know, get added to the school board agenda, and they, you know, spending taxpayer money and they vote on it that night, you know, let's see what we're doing. I think they've gotten really a lot better with their transparency on the budget and stuff, but I think we still have a ways to go. I think later we'll talk about the strategic plan and all that, and I think that adds to that layer of transparency and accountability.
And Mr. Testerman, I'm going to frame it a little different for you, because you've been serving on the school board. So, can you show us and explain how you have already tried to prioritize these two things, this transparency and accountability, as a school board member?
Well, the transparency issue, I think we have been addressing on our school board since I've been there. It has been a goal of ours to bring to light all decisions that we're trying to make. There was a time, and it's been in the distant past, and I hope it stays far distant from us, where decisions were arrived at without much community input. I was the chairman for facilities for four years, and may I say that, we held meetings, not just one, not just two, we would hold meetings when we discussed our facility plan that involved community folks, and we met in schools, we talked with PTAs when this school here was built, the old school that was in this, on this piece of property, it went back years, of times coming in, looking at the facility, seeing how it needed to be replaced. I think our school has confronted the transparency issue, especially when it comes to spending large sums of money with the public, I think we've been very diligent with it. And may I say, we do have a system that doesn't work well. I get frustrated, I was very frustrated this past year. It seems like the school board, we're asked to come up with these lists of what we want, and it's almost like children making a list for Santa Claus, if that's how I can describe it. And it just doesn't work, it's a broken type system. We had delivered a, what I thought was a well-thought-out plan for expenditure, to have new buildings and new improvements in our buildings. We made a presentation for the mayor, the word back to us, and you may not know this, we were told it wouldn't happen, that we would not have any big funding. Lo and behold, during the summer months, it all changed. Mayor was, and I'm glad he did, it was the first time on the school board, for my eight years, that the mayor came forth and said, "This is the amount of money that we're going to have, we need to get together, look at your plan, and build some schools." First time. I hope that that will be a practice that will continue. That is the type of openness that we need with our county commission, where we're not trying to make a decision in a vacuum. If there's going to be funding, let us know upfront. If not, let us know. We can budget better when we know what to expect. One other thing that I feel extremely pleased with, with transparency, our own finance department found a funding item that had been overlooked by the state of Tennessee and lovely for years, liquor by the drink, many millions of dollars. We found that on school.
Mr. McLendon, anything else to add? Mr. Testerman? So, if you've read the papers at all, watched the news, gone to either the Unified Ed or Chattanooga 2.0 websites, you know that both organizations are deeply committed to this idea of equity for our students. Different than equality, it's not giving students everything the same, it's meeting them where they are to make sure that they have equal support systems, which may mean different resources for different schools. Right now, one-third of our schools in Hamilton County are considered poverty, high-concentrated poverty schools. That means at least 80% of the students in a third of our schools qualify for free or reduced lunch. This is an epidemic. And what we're seeing across the country is this sort of inequity, because there is a lack of racial and socioeconomic integration. And that, from our research, has been a proven method of reducing these inequities and creating a much more equitable system, and where it's, there's justice in education. So, Mr. Testerman, we'll start with you now. What can you tell us as a school board member? What specific strategies do you hope that you and your fellow school board members will employ in order to address this topic, in order to create a system of equity for all students?
Well, may I say, I became an educator because of a time, a great time of turmoil in this country, it's during the 60s. There was war going on, we were not happy with it as citizens, and as young kids, we were not happy. I had a brother, all my good friends from high school just about had to go to Vietnam. It was a tough time. With soul searching, you know, as a young man, you're faced with going to war for your country, but the war you did not like. And you have to make some hard decisions. My decision was, I wanted my life to count for my fellow man. I wanted my life to count for something. I didn't want, want just to go through this life as just a, at the time I was, after high school, I was a pipe fitter and a welder. And I made a conscious decision, I was going to do something different. I got out of that ditch, and I went back to college, ended up in Chattanooga, Tennessee, Tennessee Temple. Received a secondary certification in social studies and history, went on Tennessee Tech, received a master's degree, MS and an MA from Tennessee Tech. Applied for county schools, got a job, and the rest is just history for me. I gave my life, because that was what I wanted to do, to education. I wanted to help kids. I wanted to see kids that have an opportunity to get the best education they could. My first school that I worked at, East Ridge High School, I had a program that I was involved with called Youth Employment and Training, but as a teacher, the state, we had satellite vocational schools. East Ridge was a community that had a vocational program at it, and I had a program called VIP, Vocational Improvement Program. I had a, also, not just secondary, but I had elementary certification. I had a VIP class at East Ridge and at Selkirk School. I taught every subject that a kid needed that went to vocational school. We worked, not as special ed, but we used some of the special ed techniques, we had an IEP for each kid, we gave them a new goals to set for every week, we helped them to achieve those goals. I saw it happen, I gave in my life as, also at White Oak Elementary School, was a Title I school. Kids had great needs, great needs. I saw with my own eyes, and had teachers that saw it with their own eyes, how the, offering to kids the ability to have what others have, that they were neglected, arts and education works. It worked at White Oak Elementary School, it worked in the lives of my kids, and I am so proud to say that Hamilton County Schools today has an emphasis on arts. Thanks also for 2.0 and leading that endeavor with us.
Mr. McLendon? And I just want to be clear, we're talking about a strategic initiative and a plan to fully integrate the schools to ensure equity for all kids. What will be your hope and what will be your plan if elected to school board?
I don't know if I have a plan right now, but I think this idea of a strategic plan, that the accounting, we need to see with the accounting, whether it's a three to five year or a 10-year plan, I think this needs to be a focal point of it. I think an education is a powerful tool, and I don't think we should hold students back just because of where they are, a zip code or whatever. If we think about it, if you have one kid that has lived in poverty their whole life, and they get a high school education, that changes not just that person's life or the family's life, that changes that family's life forever. So I think it's a really important, and I'm not going to sit up here and say I know the answer to just how to solve this problem, but I know if elected, it will be a focal point of my four years on the board, and I will work with anyone that wants to come to the table, this Unified Ed, community leaders, you know, if it's, anyone that wants to come to the table, because it's not, it's a bigger issue than just what the school board can do, I think. I think the school board plays an important role in it, and I think the community does. But to sit up here and say I have a strategic plan to, you know, fight this or to end this in our community, I mean, it's been a problem for years, I simply don't, I'm not going to make that promise, but, like I said, I will fight every day for students so they get an education they deserve, and so we can change lives through that education, no matter where they live or the zip code they were born into.
I'm going to push back on both of you for a second. Aside from having a specific plan, what are your personal views on having racially and socio-economically integrated schools in our community as a means of creating equity?
I would like to use my community, East Ridge. East Ridge High School is probably one of the most diverse high schools in this county. We have a strong population of Hispanic-speaking children, we have a strong program there, English language program. East Ridge, back during those early 80s that I spoke of before, when we had students and, I mean, families, 15 kids and grandmothers and grandfathers moving to this country, fleeing Cambodia, many of them set up right here in East Ridge. They were right here, they went to our schools. It was also new back then, no one knew what to do. So we did what we thought was best. We were able to find sponsors in churches, get kids enrolled in our schools, we had afternoon programs where the people, even other students would help students, some of those students with their homework and their goals. I think we can do so much more than we do in this town. But East Ridge is a diverse community, it is extremely diverse, and our schools are, have a diverse population. I'm very close to Brainerd, and I will say this, this community is a, and I know Brainerd High School and our Brainerd schools get a bad rap, but I'm here to tell you, I know what's missing. When you have children of poverty, I know exactly what it looks like. You have children that come to school that possibly do not have a book in their home that they can hold in their hand, that they can read. Many times, there's not a path that has an opportunity to spend time reading to their children at night. We can do so much better in this community. And I have, I believe on our school board right now, that part of our strategic plan right now is to confront some of these things. Years ago, through Public Ed Foundation, we do so many good things, and we get trained in so many things, and then we walk away from them and try something new. But there was a problem that we had, and I hope that we can draw back and use it again, learning communities, learning communities. Our superintendent that we have right now is making progress, I think, to make a radical change in this town, dividing our county into four learning communities. And in those learning communities, I am hoping and pushing, my voice will be, give these schools some autonomy, give these schools some say-so on how their funds are spent. Let the teacher, let the principal be the leaders of that school, give them that authority, and they can do it. I know they can, I know they can.
Mr. McLendon?
Yeah, I mean, I think it doesn't, it only does good when we have a diverse learning, you know, experience for our kids. So, I mean, just taking to your question, yes, I, you know, I support doing whatever we need to support a socioeconomic and racial integration for our schools. But I don't think it's just as easy as sitting up here and saying, you know, snap of the finger, it's going to happen, I think it takes a community effort, I think it takes a strategic plan, I think it takes a multi-year budget to make this stuff happen. I mean, you're talking about busing kids from different locations, and I mean, that takes money, that takes resources, and right now, we already are having a shortage of, you know, contract bus drivers and stuff like that. So I think, yes, it's a priority, and I think it needs to happen, but it's a thoughtful process that we have to look at, because we don't need to just say, yes, this is what we want to do, and hope it happens, we need to set a plan and course to actually make this happen, so it does happen, and we're not sitting in this room, probably like they were 15, 20 years ago, talking about the same thing 15 years, 20 years down the road, and they're having, whoever's sitting on the stage, having the same conversation.
All right, I'm going to let you keep the mic for a second. Just a reminder, the note cards that you have, if you don't have them, they're on the table up front, and Ashley, hi Ashley, she's collecting those cards, so if you have questions, please be sure to fill those out and hand those to Ashley. So, Chattanooga 2.0 and Unified Ed, you know, we're focused on education, but it's more than just K-12. A lot of times, we talk about from cradle to career. So we're going to, we're going to transition a little bit to early childhood, and I'm going to give you another stat, which is 42% of our kindergartners in Hamilton County are ready on day one to learn. And in schools of concentrated poverty, that number is half of that. So talk to me a little bit of what your plans are, how you feel about these early childhood programs, and for example, we have a pilot program called Camp K, which is going to be training and assisting rising kindergartners, so they have those necessary skills and assets that they need for day one. What are your thoughts on these early childhood and intervention and programs right before kindergarten that are going to get our kids ready for kindergarten?
I support them, I think, when we have, I think 58% of our kids that aren't ready to learn on day one, those kids are always playing catch-up, and we see that stat in our third grade literacy percentages. I think Camp K is a good thing, and I think that's something that needs to be expanded above a pilot. Another thing, I think we, I think we have pre-K in 24 different locations right now that are funded through state and federal funds, not the county. I think the county funds some teacher positions and whatnot, but I don't know if it's so much a school board thing, is, if the money's there, then yes, we need to. I think in the long run, for our community and for our students' sake, that we need to focus on early childhood education, I think, I mean, like I said, if not, they're just playing catch-up, and that's not something we want, because if they're playing catch-up in third grade, they're playing catch-up in ninth grade, and if they're playing catch-up in ninth grade, like I said, they're still playing catch-up when they walk onto a university in August after. they're still playing catch up when they walk onto a university in August after they graduate or when they go into, her dad, Ms. Bolick, her dad came in from Concord Baptist Church and they would bring in probably three days a week, a crew of, you know, 10 or 12, and they would pull us out of class and they would sit with us and we would learn math. If it wasn't for that, I would probably be awful for math. And that's something we don't see in our schools now. And I am forever grateful that I had the opportunity to have that. I mean, they pulled me out of class and I was missing stuff. But that's something we don't, we don't see in school today. And that's something I really want to bring back. We talk about community schools and community, you know, we want to open up our schools. But we need the community to come to our schools to help our students as well. Because there's only so many hours in a day for a teacher to affect a child's life. We do need our community leaders to come in, if that's in pre-K, if that's in first grade, if that's even in high school, to make sure our students are prepared, you know, for the K through J is what I call a K to a job. And that we're doing our jobs and giving them the education they deserve.
Mr. Testerman, what are your thoughts on early childhood education and expanding programs that are providing our kids with these fundamentals?
Early childhood education is essential for all children, for all children. How we're going to do it, it's going to take communities coming together and saying, this is our priority. We can do better, better in Hamilton County, Chattanooga, East Ridge, Red Bank, Lookout Mountain, wherever you want to go, Selkirk, we can do better than we're doing. It has to be a priority for our community. Well, I think we should say, it's essential to have an educated child, have pre-kindergarten experience. I'm going to use an experience I had at White Oak Elementary School. White Oak Elementary School, I was blessed. I was blessed. I loved that school. I loved my kids. When I was told I'd be the administrator of White Oak Elementary School, someone said, well, you got your hands full. I never saw it as a hand score. I saw things as a challenge. My first thing I did, I went to my community. I did not wear my tie and wouldn't wear tonight, the new gauze going on. But you, I probably wouldn't look as good in a sports shirt as you. I went door to door. I took with them a brochure of who I was and I gave it to them. I gave them my phone number, not at work, I gave them my cellphone number. That's all I've ever given to anybody. If you want to get in touch with me, I'm listed on the county website, it's my cellphone. It rings off time. I enjoy talking to people. I went door to door at White Oak Community. Nobody told me to. I knew it was the right thing to do. Here's where, these were children who were going to be going to school with a new principal and they didn't know what to expect. I wanted them to know that I would do all I can to help them be successful as a student. I attended a church in Hickson. It's a large church. And I spoke to a lady who happened to have worked with me at Selkirk School, Paulette Phillips. Paulette Phillips got the church there to arrange backpacks for kids. Church down the street, White Oak Baptist Church, White Oak Methodist Church, they partnered with us to raise and give school supplies for children. We did not dump for school supplies. I will say this, it's important that, one thing I would like to see starting quickly is there should be a program that is developed. I'll be part of it, you can be part of it, we all need to be part of it, that will give to parents some training. Anytime I had a PTA meeting as a school principal, it wasn't just a meeting to come in or walk around and visit. It was, it was a meeting that offered training to parents, training to parents, how to be a better parent at home, how to help children with their homework. We gave them what they needed. Schools have to be put in charge with their community. Let the school leader, the principal and the teacher do what they know is best and let them do it.
So we, we've alluded to this already. It's this idea of a strategic plan. And historically, we have not had a multi-year strategic plan that was either linked to priorities in our budget or to student outcomes. Instead, as most of us know, we're working with this zero sum dynamic where we are having very limited resources that go to very few schools. Even worse is that we work in this crisis mode where the schools that are basically, the building's falling down, the air conditioner is broken, we're backfilling those needs. How are you, as a school board member, going to address this? What are you going to do to advocate for a multi-year strategic plan that not only addresses budget priorities, that is not only linked to student outcome, but also incorporates this idea of equity across our county schools? And Mr. Testerman, we'll start with you this time.
I've served in schools of high poverty and I have served in schools that were different, that had low poverty in their schools. I was principal of Westview Elementary School, not the new building, but the old building. It was an old building, very old building. I've principled, it was a principal in many very old buildings. One of my stories is I had a plant in my office. There was a tree that grew up through that floor. And I decided that I wasn't going to cut that tree down anymore. I was going to cut the hole out of a bucket and put it over it and let that be more than my office plants. That's how old these schools were. Head scuffs had lived under the building. We have real needs in this county. And what we have done, and I've been involved in schoolwork for the last 40 years, we have kicked this can so far down the road. I'm not sure we're ever going to catch up. It is frustrating, frustrating as a board member to know that we got 200-plus million dollars of repairs and improvements that need to be done to our schools. And we can't get to it. How do you change that? Until they change law in Tennessee that allows school boards to either raise taxes or borrow refunds, I'm not sure how we'll do it. It's going to be a tremendous undertaking. But I'll tell you what I did. I got tired of hearing this thing, we don't have money to do something. We don't have the money to fix your football stadium. You just have to let it be in the spirit bears. That's not good enough answer. That is not right. That is not right for kids. It's not right for our communities. This community of East Ridge came together and it happened to be a football stadium that brought us together. But in doing so, it brought parents, it brought alumni into this school that hadn't been here for years. And we said, enough is enough. The Alumni Association approached the city of East Ridge and said, we need your help. Through a process of negotiations with the school board and with the city of East Ridge, the school board deeded to the city of East Ridge athletic properties. We do not have to take monies for education anymore from our funding that should be going to educate children and to repair athletic facilities in East Ridge anymore. City of East Ridge is doing that. I think it's time we ask every municipality in Hamilton County to step forward and help us with this issue. It is so wrong, so wrong. For everybody to sit back and say, it's not my job anymore. We got a county's government that takes care of our school. That's wrong. Every municipality should step forward and do more. If we're ever going to educate kids, give everybody pre-K and those various things, everybody's got to do more.
Mr. McLendon?
Yeah, as I've said before, I'm in favor of a strategic plan and a strategic budget that goes out. I think the question is, I used an example of a five-year budget. I don't know if I'd go out that far with a budget, but I'd go about three years with a budget. That gives us some leeway and stuff pops up and it doesn't throw a wrench into it. But the strategic plan, I mean, personally, I would like to see a strategic plan with the school board and the county government, the county commission together. I mean, they give us $385 million roughly a year. And I think that it's good to be on the same page. And so we set our same goals. I do think, like Mr. Testerman said, that it is time that these other communities start. East Ridge, great example of what can happen when they come together. You know, like Red Bank or Sadi Daisy, when they come together, it can change the community, what that football stadium has done to this community and what our football team has done. And they've been great in the past couple of years. But we still do have some shortcomings in this district and every district. Our basketball team, and I know this personally from personal experience because I've helped do it many times, they don't have a washer and dryer. Our coach doesn't have a washer and dryer. He takes them home every night after every practice and washes them. Him and his, me sometimes, I wash the jerseys and then fold them. And they're using, you know, their water bill. And so while we have made great gains in the past couple of years, there's still a lot we can do. And I think a strategic plan and a strategic budget that focuses on these, all these issues that we brought up tonight, really can kind of, we can stop kicking the can down the road. And so in 20 years, we can look back and say, wow, they really, you know, they got it right. We're setting us on the path of success. And that's something that I haven't seen as a student because I CSLA. Luckily, they're getting a new building, but you can go in there and I mean, it's just sad. I went to East Ridge, or not East Ridge, East Brainerd Elementary, the old one, not the new one. And some of the conditions in there, the bathrooms, I mean, they're awful. And what that did to, you know, the psyche of a student. At Udoa High School, we had water fountains hanging off the walls. You know, you couldn't, you had to go pay a dollar 25 to get a water so you could, you know, not be thirsty. So I think a strategic plan and a strategic budget will go a long way and solve a lot of these problems.
Absolutely, go ahead.
May I say that the project, the process of strategic planning is not a very new element in public education in Tennessee. Our, one of our former superintendents, Jesse Register. Jesse Register was our superintendent at the time that strategic plans were mandated by the state. And let me say, Hamilton County and Chattanooga, we were at the forefront of strategic plans in the state of Tennessee. Jesse Register, I've still made contact with him. I see him at least three times a year. That's what he does for a living. And I know that it's not where it should be. But I will say this, just wait. We have a superintendent, he's a young man, he understands that we've got the plan. And I'm looking for good things to come from our learning communities that are going to take place. We've got to give him a chance to help us with this strategic plan. I think we went a long ways last year in tweaking our plan and it will continue. Thank you.
Mr. McLendon? Our last question before we take audience questions. So this is our last call for your note cards. Hand them to Ashley if you have anything. And after this question, we will take audience cards and go through those. So the big buzzwords now for so many organizations and businesses across our community is workforce development. And we're hearing that everywhere. Give me your thoughts on the dual enrollment programs that exist now or could possibly exist, where students are not only taught a specific skill, but are eventually given the opportunity to get a credential. What are, what are your thoughts on those dual enrollment programs?
Well, the dual enrollments that we have, when I was in school, they were focused on, you go take a class at Chad State, you get a college credit. So I guess, I don't know if it's kind of changed a lot, you know, where you get a credential or something, or if it's a college credit. But I think any way that we can prepare our students for the workforce is a bonus. I think East Ridge, the mechanic facility they have over there, if they can earn some kind of, you know, credit where they work at Volkswagen or if they can earn some kind of, you know, credential where they can, you know, be certified for auto mechanic, that's great. I think these future-ready institutes are going to go a long way in that. And I would like to see them expanded in the future where, you know, students, you know, if you want to become a barber, you can go to the school that's offering that. And when you graduate high school, you have your certification and you can go get you a job and you're making money and you're supporting yourself. And that might be supporting their self for 20 years or whatever, or they can support themselves through college. And I think it is a buzzword, workforce development. But the growth we've seen in Hamilton County and Chattanooga over the, and East Ridge in the last, well, East Ridge's the last 15 years, Hamilton County's last 10, we have to keep up with that. We have to make sure we have the workers to fill these jobs at Amazon, to fill these jobs at Volkswagen, so we can attract new businesses when they look at us and say, what do you offer us if we come here? We can say, well, we offer you a well-educated workforce that are ready to come here. They're ready to work. Just invest here, invest our schools. Volkswagen has done a great job of that, investing in our Volkswagen labs. I'm pretty sure District Eight's the only district in Hamilton County that does not have a VW lab. So that's something I would like to see brought to the district. Also, because it's not just high school that we need to focus on, workforce development. We need to open up those skills, whether it be a VW lab or if it's an art teacher. I went through all of elementary school and most of middle school without an art teacher. And I can't draw or do anything now, so that's not an issue. But there's a lot of students where if they had an art teacher or something along those lines, that would open up a whole other possibility for them that they would not discover, you know, if they didn't have that. So I think that's, you know, I think it's a great thing. Although it is a buzzword, it's a very important issue for us to focus on.
Mr. Testerman?
Well, you're talking about something that has always been at my heart. Like I've given you some of my description of my past. Youth employment training has always been, in my life, one of those things that I greatly enjoyed. There was a time education was fun, not only for teachers and educators, principals, school building, even the custodians. But kids had fun in school. We lost some of those things. What's missing with what I see with our teenagers in our schools today is hope. So many times I hear kids say, if only I had a job. Mr. Testerman, can you help me get a job? Had a boy called me the other night, he's in jail. But he's in jail not for some crime. He's in jail because he doesn't have a job. He can't pay his child support. This boy needs a job. There was a time that I could have a list, just like that, of over 100 kids of companies that needed someone to work. It may not have been something big, just washing cars at a dealership. We need to get back to that emphasis. I call upon our Chamber of Commerce and I've said it one time before, hire some kids in the summertime. Hire some kids. If every member of the Chamber of Commerce would hire one kid that's deserving, that's in poverty, that's on free lunch, one, if they just hire one kid for the summer, give them a job, it'd change their life. I know it will. I've seen these things happen. It's got to become something that, it's not, we're begging for it. It's got to be something that really happens. I will say this, East Ridge, the programs that we have now are nothing like what we used to have. Our state, our country, we abandoned vocational technical education years ago. And what was, what happened was a travesty. We even took the equipment out, got rid of it. Back in the days when it was called junior high school, we had an industrial arts program in every school. Not just boys, it was girls too. They were involved in various things. They called it various things, home ec or home engineering. But I will tell you now, children receive training that benefited them as an adult. One of the best thing you can do to help a child or any human being get a job is show them what it means to get up and to go to work on time and be ready. There's a transference. Get up, get ready, go to school on time. Those things work. It is high time that we do more. We do more to bring more technical vocational training back in their schools.
Mr. McLendon, do you have something to add? Mr. Testerman, you wanted to add something?
Yes. The other one that I will add is this. George Mason, who was the sergeant of the vocational program at East Ridge High School for so many years. George Mason changed the lives of more kids, I would say, than the preachers in this community right here. He encouraged young girls and young men to make themselves stronger, smarter and braver. Many of them, they didn't have to, but many of them went on to the military. The military isn't just about fighting and killing. It's also, and those are the things that we, I wish we're not part of who we are. But the training that takes place is... But the training that takes place is remarkable. Auto mechanics, advanced auto mechanics, you get to work on million-dollar tanks. Young man that I knew went, not here to East Ridge, but Fort Oathorn, didn't know what to do. I talked with him. I asked him, "Go join the Navy. You'll become a mad mechanic on a million-dollar plane." He did. ROTC can offer a lot if we just give it a chance.
Okay, our first question from the audience is about zoning. And Mr. Testerman, we'll start with you for this one. Schools where the majority of students live in poverty almost always struggle as a result of intergenerational poverty and its effects. Are either of you in favor of a plan to redraw district lines to break up zones of concentrated poverty instead of keeping poor children together in schools that then become low-performing as a whole? This would enable both racial and economic diversity in schools?
Well, I see a conflict of some of our goals. Strong community schools, but then also allowing children to go elsewhere. I think we can do both. I really do. I remember a time, and this was only in the old county school, we had what was called open enrollment. If you lived in Soddy Daisy and you were working in Chattanooga and you rode by Red Bank High School, and Red Bank High School had availability for your child to go there, you could enroll the child. Now, when it reached the maximum number and it became too large, they had to call the open enrollment. But after that first few days of school, if you wanted to go to another school, all you had to do was get there, and you were allowed to go to another school. When I was principal at Westview Elementary School, probably during the last years that we had open enrollment, I could have had 1,200 kids if I wanted them. Just didn't have the room for them. All they had, 25 mobile, not mobile homes, they were just buildings that someone had erected that built back 20 years, that were supposed to be temporary, but they, permanent temporary buildings. I had, it was open enrollment. Folks from East Brainerd would come there. Folks that lived out of Appleson would come there. Udewa would come there because it's on their way to work. Made sense. Mom and dad could drop the kids off, pick them up all the way back. County school started something years ago, and I think it should be expanded. It was called childcare. Childcare from six to six. Childcare from six to six gave an opportunity to have open enrollment schools. It was the thing that made it successful. We can do that again. That's why I'm just so excited about the learning communities that are going to come our way. I'm encouraging our superintendent to consider open enrollment if it can help children that are not being successful in the school they're attending. I think we need to give it another shot. I really do. Other things that we can do, transportation. I did this at White Oak Elementary School. Had children that did not have transportation. They could not catch a bus. They lived on the other side of Chattanooga, just about. We worked with a cab company in Chattanooga. We paid them through title funds so they could go buy and pick up kids and bring them to our schools. We can solve it. We've just got to get together, talk more about it. I think we've got a superintendent that's willing to do some things, and we need to give it a try. Again, I take it back to our principals and our teachers. Speak up, folks, because I think you are the real leaders of your school.
Mr. Testerman, I'll let you keep the mic for a second. Would you be willing or open to the idea of redrawing district lines?
Well, let me say this. Anytime you say redrawing district lines, you cause a heartbeat to skip with many parents. I have problems in any time that we disrupt a child from one school and have to move into another. If we can grandfather like we have done in the past, I'm all for it. I think what we've got to consider is the communities, the teachers. And if there are schools here that wish, or any of our school board people that wish to see those things happen, we should consider it. May I say, what has driven redistricting so far in my tenure on school board has been growth in housing and communities. That's the one thing that is pushing it forward. I'll tell you, folks, Chattanooga, Tennessee is on fire. Not literally, but I'm talking about housing and growth. When you get all the, I mean, it's amazing to see this. I wish we had a member of the school board on the planning commission. It should be mandatory. There should be somebody who's on that planning commission says, "You're going to build 1,500 houses, and we do not have a school there?" Wait a minute, guys. We need to build a school too. Some of these things has got to be done with better planning, better timing, and with better foresight.
Thank you, thank you. And Mr. McLendon, I'm going to direct the question to you too. I just want to make sure we're listening to the integrity of the question from the audience because the specific question is, are you in favor of a plan that would redraw the districts?
I think like Mr. Testerman said, when you say redistricting, it throws a wrench in people's plan and you're moving kids from this school to that school. So if we can grandfather it in like we have in the past, then I think that can be something we look at. It would have, depends on the plan before I would say I would support it. But it was something I would look at and, you know, strongly support that we do a study on or we look at how it's going to affect these communities and whatnot. I think just going on the redistricting line or the lines that they are now, without the whole socioeconomic and racial stuff. I lived, you know, Brainerd Hills, and I'm zoned for Udewa, I'm five minutes from Tyner, and I have to drive 15, 20 minutes to Udewa every single day to go to school. So I think there's common sense kind of stuff that can be changed. And I think when we look at that, we can also look at how we can make these communities and these schools more diverse and more, you know, inclusive of all these communities. Because I think it just makes the schools stronger and it lifts the students that need to be lifted up. It lifts them up. And it also gives the students that come from well-off families, I think it gives them a perspective and it teaches them a lot too, and it just brings worlds together. And I also think this is something I'm going to bring up, and I think it's just crazy and absurd that it isn't. But we have to have someone either from the board, if it's the chairman, if it's someone from central office on the planning commission. Because I'm from East Brainerd, have lived there. The growth out there in Appleson and Udewa, Collegeville is just, you see these subdivisions that are going to have 150, you know, houses in them. Well, we opened up East Brainerd Elementary. Day one, it was capacity. They're going to have to do something about that in a couple of years. We're already, I guess, East Hamilton's eight years old now, nine years old. They're having to already build a new middle school. So I think if we look at redistricting, we look at, you know, being smart with how we do it with the planning commission. I think it is definitely something that I would look at. I'm not going to say I'm in favor for it right now just because of whatever plan it could be. I'm not going to, it could be something I don't like, but I like another plan. So I'm just going to say, it's something I will consider. I will look at. I will advocate for. And then when the time comes we have a plan, you know, I'll bring in community input. What do you want at East Bridge Elementary? Do you like this at East Ridge High School? Do you like this at Barber?
CSLA. CSLA is one of the most successful schools in this county and in the state of Tennessee and in this nation. I have fought till my knuckles were raw to get a brand-new K-12 CSLA on the property that it's at. It didn't happen. It did not happen. That was a dream that I thought would be the diamond in the necklace of this county and probably the state. But may I say this, we will have one. And there is going to be room. We're moving from a K-8 to a K-12. There's going to be room for a couple more hundred kids to get one of the best-quality educations public school can offer. Chattanooga School for the Arts and Science, just down the street here. I don't know how you do it. We need to replicate these things more and more and more. And support them. And support them. With transportation. Caribus Company, I see them drive by schools every day. I wish they'd give free tokens to kids to go to school. Thank you.
Mr. McLendon, I'll give you a minute.
Yeah, something I didn't mention is open enrollment. I am a big proponent of that. I spent probably two weeks last summer renovating, helping renovate Rivermont Elementary. One of my friends called up and said, "Hey, they're completely redoing the school. I need help. They're painting." And so I spent about eight hours a day for a week and a half up on a ladder painting, tubes so they look like Mario World or something like that. And I saw parents come in and they were doing open enrollment. And I mean, just the joy that the kids saw when they saw what we were doing, the parents, what they said it meant to them. I think open enrollment can be a very powerful tool for us. I think there's a lot of these people we're talking about, the poverty, concentrated poverty, they don't have the means to transport them. So I think that's something we have to look at. It's very expensive to bus students. But I think through these strategic goals and these strategic plans, we can work this in. You know, it might not be right away, but it might be a process that we kind of work in, you know, a one-year, two-year, three-year kind of thing, where we kind of give every student the opportunity to attend a school that they want to.
All right, our next question's about special education. I want to thank whoever wrote this for writing it in the eight-point font. That's going to test my reading and sight at the same time, so. All right, IDEA, which is a federal law protecting students with disabilities, requires identified students to be placed in their least restrictive environment. Currently, the Hamilton County buses are busing students to their next nearest school to segregated classrooms. East Ridge Elementary has several of these programs, according to this question. These programs have had very little accountability, and the students there are wasting away. Many students in these programs spend these days watching movies, and if in a good program, spend minimal time being educated or being taught to read. With an old program that does not teach anyone how to read but focuses only on sight words, what will, here comes a question, what will you do as a school board member to ensure more accountability in special education? Mr. McLendon, we'll start with you.
This is something that is near my heart. My grandmother drove a special education bus for probably 10 years. She's like my second mom. Her daughter, she is at East Ridge Elementary. She's a special education assistant, and that's a whole other thing. I mean, our special education assistants make like nine or $10 an hour. And the stories that she tells me are just, you know, what they go through, what they do for these kids. I mean, it is a lot, and that's a different topic. But I think that we need to have more accountability, and I've seen this at Udewa. We had this, and when my position, when I was there in our leadership classes, we went down there and we kind of mentored and we spent time with these students. And a lot of times we walked in there and they were watching a movie or they were doing something. And then we would come and they'd turn the movie off and we would do some games or whatever with them. And I think that's something that the board needs to look at. I think we need to make sure whoever at central office, if we need to add more to that staffing position or that department, that's what we need to do. I think this is, they're just not there to, they need to learn and they want to learn. That's the thing. When I've interacted with our special needs and our special education students is, they have a drive to learn and they want to. If it's arts, they're some of the best artists I've ever seen. I think we need to look at how we can get the best, give them the best education they deserve and need as well. And so I think it kind of all encompasses that we just need to do more. We need to be more accountable. We need, as a board, I want to know what is going on in these schools. If something like that's happening, call me my cell phone number, you know, and I'll try to find, go to the bottom of it. And I probably speak for Mr. Testerman in this as well. But it's something that we have to look at and we need to change and make sure there is accountability and transparency and that these kids are getting the education they deserve.
Or one of their assistants or their designee. I have served in schools when I was at, Westview Elementary School had the language impaired class. And this took children from three years old who had consuming language problems. They came to my school. But in their IP, we always worked, an opportunity for children to be out of that separated class that you mentioned, to have contact with other students during the day, as many hours as possible. That could be reading class. It could be PE class. And do not underestimate PE as being extremely important with developmentally delayed children. It's extremely important. You learn so much with your hands and with your body. The kinesthetic element of children learning has been proven over and over. Library. The ability for a child just to interact with other students as you move through a building is tremendous. I saw children that came in as three years old at Westview. We were only at that time a K-3, but their lives were changed. They had friends that developed in those early years that went on to middle school and to high school. It should be the goal, and it is my goal, to see that every child has an opportunity to be placed in the least restricted environment as possible. I was principal at White Oak Elementary School. White Oak Elementary School was a specialized school in that. Hearing impaired children were bused to my school. Most of these kids, the only way they could communicate is through sign language. May I say, when we had M-Team meetings and the leaders of our special program with the county schools, it was not an option. Children had to be mainstreamed into the classroom. They might would meet together for an hour, maybe hour and a half during the day as a group. They would meet again for, go over homework. We had children who had assigned to them aides that would follow them from class to class, that could sign with them, that followed them all the way through high school. They were mainstreamed. We have some great success stories. There are things we need to do to improve. And again, I'm willing to support whatever it's going to take for our children with special needs.
Okay, our next question is about the budget. So we discussed this a little bit, but this wants to address the last time the budget has been audited. In your memory, Mr. Testerman, we'll start with you. When is the last time that the school budget was audited? And along those lines, when is the last time that each school's needs have been reviewed or audited?
By law, our books are audited every year. We have an auditorium that come in every year and look at our books. It's a requirement of state law. They also, each school's books are looked at and audited. And they do find mistakes, both at the county level and at the building level. And there, we run under a stringent rules when it comes to purchasing and spending money. And most principals can tell you right now, it's not an easy thing to spend money in public schools. It's not. What a principal has to do is make sure, even among our teachers that have what few dollars they have to spend, you have to make sure that a teacher gets the right purchase order, follows the proper procedures, because that is a paper trail that is going to be looked at at the end of the year. And if there's problems with it, it does end up in a principal's file if there are inappropriations that takes place. Same thing with county schools. Our books are looked at each year. Now, is it time that we probably should have every few years, two teams to look at them? I have no problem with that at all. None whatsoever. I do recall a time, this has been many years ago, our books were audited in county schools. And in the process of that audit, they found some funds that had been placed years ago. Years ago, some funds that were placed in a savings account. And they discovered that savings account, and it had grew to several million dollars. And it ended up becoming a means and a way for the superintendent at the time to offer... teacher paybacks. There are very few of those out there, but I would say this. I personally know that there have been discrepancies that have been found in books in this, in some of our schools. And I know that there, at, at one time, there was, it was discovered that some organizations with your schools, uh, did not provide proper auditing of their books at the end of the year. And there were people that had to go to court over those things. And I would, I would say as a school principal, you should always remember and as a, as administrator in any building or as a teacher, there's only one set of books in a school. There's only one checking account that you'd ever use. If you, if you move from that and try to move to another personal account, you will be caught, you will be discovered, and it is against the law. So I'm, I feel that it's, I, I welcome all the auditing that we can get. I, I really do. I'm not ashamed to put the books out there. Matter of fact, come scrutinize them. If there's money out there, we need to find it. If we, if we're in debt, we need to let everybody know if we're hiding that.
Mr. McClendon?
I mean, yeah, it's state law that we have to be audited. So I mean, I think that needs to be done. If it's not, then it, it needs to be. And I think, um, that if it takes where every other year, we give someone the authority to come in and do surprise audits, then, then that's what needs to be done. Um, I think it, it's taxpayer money. It's your money, it's our money that's going into these schools and we need to make sure we're spending every single dollar on the students. Um, and I think I'd welcome any of this. I think it needs to be looked at and I think we need to look at the budget closely. I mean, and this is something personal that when Dr. Johnson came to, to town and, you know, we're paying him $250 or something like that for a printer in his personal house when we have teachers that don't even have printers. I mean, that, that, yeah, I, I think that's something we need to look at and make sure we're not only spending the money where it's supposed to be spent, but that we're spending the money that we do have in the right places. Um, so yeah, I would be all for auditing, surprise audits, you know, anything that, that holds the board and the, the school system accountable with taxpayer money.
All right, we've got time for one last question and this is addressing economic mobility. I'm going to let you keep the mic. On a scale of one to 100, I feel like this is a game show now, right? One of those good password, password. On a scale of one to 100, where do you think Hamilton County schools are in terms of providing a platform for economic success? And how do you measure that success?
Save the loaded question for last. Um, I would say, you know, I would say on a, on a grade scale, speaking education, we're at a D-plus, C-minus for, for that. Um, I don't think we're doing what we can to, what we can be doing for our students and I don't think we're giving them the tools that, you know, that, that drives that. Um, how do I, how do I measure that? I think you, you look at it in graduation rates, I think you look at it. Um, I, there's a statistic that, I can't remember, it's like 30 or 40% of our stu-grad, high school graduates don't even go on to any kind of higher education, vocational or to a university, six years after. Um, I think that's something that we can work on and making sure, you know, saying, hey, working with college, um, we had someone at Udoa that basically walked us through the college application process. None of my parents went to college and they had no clue what they were doing. Um, and so that, it was a big help and I think that, that all plays into the, it's puzzle pieces that come together to, when we have, have, have a student leave Hamilton County, we want that puzzle to be complete or almost complete when they complete it at higher education or vocational training. So I think we're a C-minus, D-plus and I think that we can do better and we, we should do better. And I think we're at a turning point right now in the county on that. I think the last 20, 30 years have been just awful and I think we failed our students. Um, and I think this next couple of years are, are really going to see where we're going to go. If we're going to take education off the back burner and put it up there with stuff like we have, like the internet and the riverfront, we need to prioritize and say, you know, we really don't need a brand-new riverfront when we have kids that aren't getting the education they deserve and they're going to let them poverty their whole life. So I think while we do have some successes, there's a lot that we can do.
Mr. Testament?
I'd like for you to read your questions again.
I would love to read my question.
Thank you.
I would love to get my brand-new $20 technicals to read them. Okay. On a scale, sorry, on a scale of one to 100, where do you think Hamilton County schools are in terms of providing a platform for economic success? And how do you measure that success?
And you're, just to get clarification, you talked about for students?
Well, I didn't write this question.
Or for our community?
Whoever wrote this question, would you like to?
For a student?
For our community.
For our community. I would, I would say that we're not doing too good. Uh, if we're at 50, I'd say that's, that's pretty high for us. We can do a lot better than we're doing, I do know that. When we decided years ago to remove vocational education, technical education out of the school system, almost overnight, we increased the graduation rate for kids to now, Hamilton County has, you have to have more credits than what the state requires. See my brother here on the front row, when he and I were in school, how many did it take you, 16 to graduate? 16 to 17 used to be the standard. Somehow we got this idea that more was better. I'm not sure it is. I was a principal at, at high schools. You, if you have a student that enters your school as the ninth grader, they're 16 years old. If they have success for four years, they'll graduate when they're 20. If they do not, it could be 21. Folks, we need to take seriously the idea of helping a student, especially those who, who are behind and may not graduate. We want to have successful communities and have children and young men and women who have the ability to enter the workforce and be successful. We've got to give them opportunity to accelerate. We've got to give them a hope that if, if they can complete, whether it be an online course or an independent study that's supervised by an educator and can, and get an extra credit that's going to move them forward to graduation, that right there is going to change a student's lives. If, if we continue to follow this path that we have, that is college or nothing, we're going to fail and we're going to have children that are not going to fail when it comes to making a living. We can, we can do better. I would, I propose and I do feel that, uh, my voice on the school board represents vocational technical training. I know it work, it works, I've seen it work. Welding teacher at East Ridge High School for years, produced graduates that left high school, that went to work for Kamon Sue, that went to work for, uh, for TBA that, he had students that graduated in capacity to like to get their welding license. Young men and young girls that went on to make above D-seven pay, so making $35 an hour. Same thing with electrical program. Great means of education. No, we're not doing good.
All right, I'm going to give you each one minute. I'm going to let Mr. Testament start. Uh, back to you. Uh, one minute of closing and I just want you to know, whatever questions we did not get to unify, it's going to make sure we get them to the candidates so that they can answer and we will post on our, our website. Right, Natalie? Okay. Um, and so, uh, one minute we'll give you, uh, just as a closing remark. Mr. Testament?
Well, I, I left probably one of the greatest things and joys of my life to be here tonight. I've got a little grandbaby that's just a few days old up in Wisconsin. I drove 13 hours to be here. I wanted to be here. I believe in education so strong, it has been my life. I wouldn't know what to do. My mind would not know how to work if I could not think about what we're doing. I know that we can do better. I know we can and I hope that our community will get behind our new superintendent and listen and give him the opportunity to do better. Uh, I'm going to refer again to the, the learning communities that, that are developing. Get behind them. Get behind them. I think that it's something that will change us. Uh, I am a firm believer of stability for elementary kids, middle school and high school. I hope that we can see principals and teachers remain in their school without the threat of having to move back and forth. I think we need those type of stabilities. I welcome your support. I welcome your phone calls. I will do, if, if you need something, call me. If I can do it, I will. Thank you.
Mr. McClendon?
Yeah, like I said, we're at a turning point with education in, in Hamilton County and I, I want to be the, the person and the, on the board that rides the ship with education in Hamilton County. Um, we have a decision to make. Do we want to stay with the status quo of what we've done for the last 20, 30 years? Or do we want to say education matters? We want to have a prepared workforce. We want to have students that are successful. I want to be that choice. I want to be the person and on the board that does those things. I don't have kids, I'm going to have kids and I want to, when they get to kindergarten, when they get to first grade, I want to say, you're getting a better education than I am. So I humbly ask for your support on August 2nd. Um, and if you ever need me, I have cards, my phone number. You can email me, text me, call me, Facebook me, anything. Um, I'm, I'm open. I want to be your representative and I want to work for you.
So before I turn it back over to Natalie, let's have a round of applause for our two candidates. Thank you both. We're really excited to be co-hosting this whole debate series with Chattanooga 2.0 and also in partnership with the Urban League of Greater Chattanooga and also the Hamilton County Education Association. Um, we've got three more debates currently scheduled. Tomorrow night, District Six will be at Lookout Valley Middle High School. Next Monday, May 14th, District Nine will be at Udoa High School. Um, and May 21st will be District Three at Hickson High School. And we are still working to nail down the date for District Five, which we've planned to hold at Dealwood, hopefully by the end of May as well. Um, the video of the live stream from tonight will be on Facebook later on this evening, I believe, and then we'll have it shared on YouTube tomorrow as well. We'll post that on our blog. Um, and what I'll do is, um, in that blog post with the video, we'll also put any responses to remaining questions that did not get to be asked, um, on behalf of the audience. Um, any responses that we get back from the candidates, um, will be posted to the blog there as well. So thank you so much for coming out tonight.